Good evening and welcome to the Winter Town Council meeting for July 18th, 2023. It is currently a little after 7:00 PM. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room and I would ask Denise to call the meeting to order with the roll call.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Fisillo.
Here.
Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Placot.
Here.
Council Ayello.
Here.
Vice President Regero.
Here.
President Luterrin.
Yeah. Ask everyone to please rise for the pledge led by Council Placot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Minutes have been circulated from the June 27th meeting. Everyone has received. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council Fisillo. Any discussions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it.
One abstention by Council Regero, Vice President Regero.
Public hearings, we have none this evening. We have a first round of public comments and we will open up the floor for people in the audience and then we will go to Zoom. Yes?
Facility Malius Precinct 5, two points I'd like to make. There are a few committees that I feel should be, their meetings should be recorded either through Zoom, one of those being the Board of Health, especially since they have the authority to put through regulations and ordinances without the town council's vote. I think it's very important that we are very transparent and we're able to see live or at least recorded what is going on in those meetings as minutes can sometimes not always reflect the true outcome of what was stated. I'd also like to know as far as if the school committee has representation from the town council, there's one, the council president sits on the school committee, why is there no member from the town council on the Board of Health? I think that is also very important. As like I stated, they have the authority to create ordinances and regulations and put them into place. So I think that is very important as well. Second piece, the middle school site has been sitting there for X amount of years and it sounds like there's, might be some push there. I had a conversation with one of the teachers at my school in East Boston and she is a huge sports mom and she is constantly traveling around the state of Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island. And we were talking and we were discussing the use of these super athletic complexes that house six to 10 basketball courts, three hockey rinks, volleyball courts, pickleball, tennis. And I, a light went up in my head and I said, well, you know what? I think that'd be an awesome opportunity for us here at the middle school site to kind of look at. It will control the population as the schools are almost at, well, I don't actually know the number, but possibly at capacity. But it will also generate revenue for the town and it will bring people down to our town center and help our businesses out. So I would, I know that you guys are looking into certain things, what would be the best option? I would ask the council to look into that, possibly maybe look for a developer. And I think it would be a great aspect of our town being almost like the center of the greater Boston, start of the North Shore area as a sports complex mecca. So it's a nice area, let's get the ball moving on it, let's bring in some money for the town. That way when it comes to negotiations, we can take care of our, our people here. Thank you.
Thank you. I will address a couple of those points you brought up, three. The first one on the meetings being recorded, are these meetings not recorded at, at the very minimal?
Some are, some aren't.
Oh, some are, some aren't. I was under the impression that policymaking boards were recorded, maybe not visually, but.
No, they don't necessarily have to be because of the minutes, but.
Well, the minutes aren't also.
No, I understand. We, we will look into that. On the second point, on the Board of Health School Committee, when we created the charter back in '05, one of the biggest concerns we had was to bridge that gap and to, you know, to, to eliminate differential between towns and schools. So we thought it would be really good to have a member of the council on the school committee and we discussed how that member would be, but school committees in Massachusetts, unless you have a home move petition, have to be voted on by the public because we had thought that we could just have a member and ask, you know, member, Council Placot would be our appointment to the school committee. We can't do that because they have to be elected, so that's how it ended up being the council president. As far as on the Board of Health, the council president is an ex officio member of all the committees in town, but that is a good point because we do have liaisons on certain committees, right? We have liaison on the CDICI now and, and so we will take that under advisement as well. And on your third topic, I've brought this up over, over the last couple of months that I've been looking into a very, looking into a possibility of doing something similar to what you're discussing and we're going to have much more on that in the, over the next month. So you will be hearing much more on that. And, and that's it. Other public comments? Yes, Mr. Lucero.
Paul Lucero from Swetzlikers Three Summers Inn. Couple of things I would publicly like to thank Council Honan. I was pleasantly surprised Saturday when I came to work at about 1:00, she had been weeding out the planters in front of my store. She was there in the hot sun, humidity and everything for at least four hours, did a great job. I just want to recognize her, the great job that she did. Unbeknownst to her, I had filed like three weeks ago a seed click fix thing, so three weeks, I got acknowledgement that it was received, but nothing was done. So I don't know if there's a maintenance schedule for the planters down the center, just like there are for the mowing of the grass, but some schedule has to be made up, I would think. We had a problem last year with them not watering, now we got a problem with them not maintaining it. So there's got to be something that I think, town spent a lot of money on these planters and it's just going to go all to weed if nothing's done. My second thing is I spoke to Council Ayello this past week, I have a drain in front of my store with some stagnant water in there and he advised me to ask Mr. Marino, which I did tonight, about what could be done. So it looks like an easy fix, just drop some big things down there.
They call them bricks.
Bricks.
They prevent the mosquitoes from, you know, breeding. It happens a lot in the suburbs, stuff like that. We've, the mosquito control will go around and drop bricks in all the catch bases so that doesn't happen and keeps the population down. Because you always get stagnant water at the bottom of the storm drain, so they drop them in there so they don't breed and keeps the mosquito population down.
So my follow-up to that would be, why is there stagnant water? Why isn't it draining away? Number two. And number three, can the town identify all these drains that have stagnant water so they aren't a breeding spot for mosquitoes? And my last thing, which Jim and Facility brought up was a little transparency on what is going on with the middle school. It's been eight years, I hate to see another council kick it down the road. Something's got to be done, you know, anything to generate some income for the town so that you guys are not always scraping for money when it's budget time. You know, get it off the books, get, making some money for the town, whatever you can do would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by the town speaking. Thank you for your time.
And again, to repeat, there will be a presentation coming in, in short order on a proposal for the middle school, thoughts on the middle school. As far as the stagnant water, I don't know the reason. I know it's all new work down there, right? So we will look into that. And on the weeding, I've also heard that Council Honan did an incredible job down there. I hope you offered her a non-alcoholic beverage while she was sweating out Saturday morning.
Or alcoholic.
And no, and, and I know the, you know, just in people's eyes, the excess rain that we've been getting, it's been causing a lot of, I'm sure, weeding and stuff like that. But I've been looking at other municipal buildings in town that, or municipal buildings in town, not talking about the center, that definitely are in need of, of some TLC, I guess. But, you know, that is something that the council discussed many times. We spent upwards of $14 million to do that CBD project and the main purpose has been, or one of the main purposes was always to, you know, not get into a patent and not just on, on greenery and stuff, but just even on building maintenance and stuff that we've built, stuff in the past that haven't maintained it properly and we will be on that as well.
I've been around long enough for the previous center revitalization when the town was supposed to seal the bricks every year or two, which never happened, causing them to deteriorate and just another waste of money. So, I mean, if you want something nice, you've got to take care of it. That's the way I view it.
Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Other public comment? Is it, yes?
Precinct 4, Joe Nelson. I have a question about the sign up at the park up at Crest Ave. Who authorized the sign up there? Joe Biden's infrastructure?
I've had similar comments on that, similar concerns on that, questions on that, I guess. And that is a requirement from the, my understanding is, and I'll ask the town manager, that's a requirement of the grant, but I will ask the town manager.
It's federally funded, that project through the SRF Home and it's actually listed in the contract, the size of the sign, colors and what it has to say, but I, you know, take away whatever, it's not politicized because if it was, you know, Bill Clinton or George Bush or whatever, whatever president at the time, whatever funding program, their name would be on that sign.
I was thinking it would say federal infrastructure, you know.
It does, it says the infrastructure program on bottom.
Oh, I see Joe Biden's name.
It's names first and then it says it's funded through the infrastructure program.
My, my buddy Eddie McNeil, that park was dedicated to him about 14 or 15 years ago. He was still in Vietnam and he was only 27 years old and he was killed in May of 71. And Joe Biden left Afghanistan there, left all kinds of billions of dollars of equipment and then those 13 veterans that were killed. And then when they came back and they were being unloaded there for the bodies, he stood there looking at his watch every few minutes. And that kind of aggravates me where that sign is on that property that was dedicated to my buddy Eddie McNeil, who I graduated with, we were great friends. It just, it bothers me that that sign is there. It can't be put anywhere else. I mean, it has to be on that park?
It's got to be near where the project's going on and that's where the funding is. So that was the spot, that was the picture. We'll certainly ask, but I'm not sure we have a lot of leeway there because it is one of the contract requirements.
Okay, I just wanted an answer to it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your service. Yes, Paul.
Paul Caruccio. I'm representing the Winter Republican Town Committee and I have been notified, as you have, by many residents regarding the Biden sign at Crest Ave Park. As far as the committee is concerned, these people are not associated with the committee, but they seek me out. As far as the sign goes, we believe it's more a political sign than it is an infrastructure sign, given the fonts and the letter, when people refer to it as the Biden sign. So I, we think that's wholly inappropriate that when someone's a candidate for office, that the sign should be that manner. We have no problems with the president's, president's name needs to go on it, but not the manner in which it is. So we would prefer to see that sign removed or certainly relocated. The other thing is, I also have seen Duke McNeil down at that park when he was alive, every morning raising the flag, saluting that flag. And it's, the fact that it is dedicated to veterans, it seems inappropriate that the sign should be there. Our preference is to actually have a sign that's appropriate and can put the president's name or have the sign moved or have that sign relocated. We, it looks like the infrastructure sign, the president's on it, but not the president is the feature of the sign. I'm going to keep it short and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Dan.
Jack, Precinct 1. I do appreciate all efforts, volunteers' efforts to keep the town looking good. Thank you very much. I spend many days volunteering myself so I know what goes into it. The green space in the middle of the center is being destroyed by dogs and mostly the dogs come from the Somerset Building because they advertise that building to be a pet-friendly building. I've mentioned this before, that if you're going to advertise for a pet-friendly building, you should have an on-site area on your property to users of the training or what have you. Many, many developments now do this. One in particular, I didn't get a chance to bring a picture in, I wanted to. The space, I think it's right across from Boston Garden. The space is probably 20 yards by 30 yards. It has a green carpet with a mesh underneath, underneath that is a stainless steel tub sort of, and it leads to the sewer system. It also has a hydrant and many other dog features. Since we're going to be looking at another development coming up real quick, which is the Bank of America property. I hope somebody makes them realize that they shouldn't be using the town square as a urinal. I was down there today and it looks, it looks green from a distance, but when you get right on top of it, it's really disgusting. And people take their children there, you know, the children run on the wall, they fall over on the grass and they're falling into a dog urinal basically. So I said this before, why can't we have signs down there? There are signs down the public landing telling you what to do with your pet, the find. So I don't know why there hasn't been signs put up at the, at the center area to keep the people from using that property and ruining the property basically. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you did bring that up before and I have asked for signs to be put down there and, and my understanding is that they will be up there shortly.
Thank you.
That they have, thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Denise?
No.
Anyone else? There will be another round. Thank you. Correspondence, Denise?
I have received none.
Committee reports. Council Fisillo, Finance.
Yes, the Finance Committee met before this meeting. We had one item on the agenda. It was the appropriation of funds for the water sewer capital stabilization project or the PRV project. That motion was given a positive recommendation unanimously by the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Council. Public Health and Safety.
Um.
Council Placot.
Unfortunately, I've been dealing with a family emergency in Florida and back and forth to Florida for the past few weeks and prior to that, my committee members were also traveling.
Yep.
So we have not met.
Okay, that's fine. And Rules and Ordinance?
Rules and Ordinance has not met since our prior meeting, but it looks like potentially some other items could be referred to Rules and Ordinance tonight, maybe, maybe not, but either way we'll be having a meeting prior to the next council meeting.
Very good. School Department report. The school committee did meet, we met last week ago, Monday, and the major item on discussion at that meeting, obviously children are out of school and enjoying summer vacation, which is great. And it is also kind of a school committee report too, but it's incredible to see the use that Ingleside Park is getting and even talking about the pickleball courts, especially on my way here tonight, all courts were full last night, all courts were full. And just an update, there is going to be a divider going up between the pickleball courts and the tennis courts that's in that complex that will be up by the first week in August. On the school committee specifically, we had a presentation given to us by the town manager discussing the possibility of applying for a grant that could lead to new roofs for our schools or one or two of our schools, which would also give the opportunity for SOLA on the schools. I'll ask the town manager to give a, just a 30-second.
Sure. We reached out by Soltech, I believe, Sol, SLTec, one of the companies.
Yes.
The one that's doing the, has, currently has the panels on the middle school, high school, the new building. And they wanted to reach out about the elementary schools, well, there's a new funding coming out with this year's, you know, SOLA funding and it's in committee right now and they hope to have it approved. What it will do is if one of the, detriment, one of the reasons why SOLA or more SOLA's not coming out is they're finding that people have, you know, 25 or 30-year-old roofs and they don't have the capital money to replace them and they don't want to put SOLA panels on an old roof. So they allotted, I think it's a hundred million or more to new roofs. Now, one of this, this company wants us to, you know, be one of the first programs out of the gate, so they want us to get started now. So as soon as the funding's authorized, we'll have what's, you know, a shovel-ready project, for lack of a better word, but our project ready to be submitted for consideration for both our elementary schools. We would ask for funding for the roofs and the only way we do SOLA is if we get the funding for the roofs and timing-wise, we're in need of roofs on both our elementary schools, so it works out well. So we just, the school committee voted, authorized me to sign that agreement, let them get to work. It's no commitment to us, we don't get their money for the roofs, we don't have to do anything, but at least the company can go to the due diligence and be ready to submit the paperwork as soon as the funding is authorized.
It is a fantastic opportunity and timing is everything and, and the, the Gorman Ford Banks is 22, 23 years old and the ATC is in that 20-year-old range too. So it's, it would, timing is everything, right? So it would be a fantastic opportunity for us, a new roof potentially cost over a million bucks for each school. Council Ayello.
Just a point of inquiry. So I agree, it sounds like a great grant program, that would be wonderful. The question is, are we sole sourcing it to one company? Have we compared commercial terms and conditions among the companies that could provide this work? Because in a lot of these things, you look at the imputed interest rates, imputed returns to the company and it's always better to get a little bit of competitive tension to get the best deal out of whoever we select.
One of the agreements is we get to negotiate the PPA power purchase agreement and that's where you're talking about like how much we're buying the power back, what the length of the terms are and all that.
But with multiple parties?
Yeah, we're going to do that with multiple parties, but you have to.
Okay, so we're not sole sourcing it to one party? There will be multiple bids coming in to us that we can evaluate.
Correct, and for the roofs as well, yes.
Great, thank you.
I also have a quick question, if you don't mind. I'll add that. Yeah, I'm, I'm just like that on the roof. My question was, I think this is a great idea. The only question was, is there like with replacing roofs, is there any disruptions to schools and sort of the school?
No, we, we try to time it out with the summertime, right?
Okay.
You don't want to do a weather in schools, so maybe just we can time it and grab it at, but yeah.
Thanks.
We minimize disruption. A lot of work is done over the summertime just because, you know, June 17th hits or whatever, we're, you know, ready to hit the ground running.
All right, and that was the majority of the meeting at the school committee, so that is the school department report. Town manager report.
Thank you. Talk about school committee, thank you. We had the ferry update. Many, many people know this, first couple of weeks have been huge success, not only the ferry been up and running with their brand-new engines, but also attendance has been high, have given reports from many people about high attendance, so we're happy about that. A lot of our employees is now working for, you know, OneBlower or City Experiences, whatever they want to be called these days, and everything's going really well. So I'm happy to report that. We've been having constant communication with both the MTA and the City Experiences to see how we can be of assistance and giving out people on the docks or, you know, potentially opening up the ferry building, could actually be a ferry building, things like that. We have conversations with that so we can, you know, open that up, maybe get out of the rain and, you know, obviously the bathrooms are open, but to use that main terminal there in the middle, so more to follow on that. The Tip Project, I've made work, we're not doing the night work anymore as everybody knows, that stopped right before the 4th of July, we're back to doing work during the day. There are two-week updates that are going out in my town manager blog, but we're also going to work on getting an email list of all the businesses so we can make sure that that blog, either blog and/or the two-week update where reports and where the work's going to happen, it's going out to all the business owners as well. Some returnal update, I sat in on a call yesterday morning, obviously the first week was July 4th week, so there wasn't a lot of traffic, but the second week they really monitored what was going on. What they're using as a baseline is the June traffic data and then that, so they're keying everything back to that. The worst day of the week right now, and it happened again today, was Tuesday. Tuesdays had teams seem to be the most, the heaviest traffic days. They went up about, added about 30 minutes to the commute, average commute on Tuesday and then it sort of leveled out with everything just being within five or 10 minutes over what the June commute was. So I think people are, you know, first Tuesday back after vacation, I think everybody, you know, maybe they forgot or, you know, hadn't made other accommodations yet, but now it seems to have settled out. So we're going to do, they'll do another follow-up meeting in three weeks and we'll see how it's going, so. And then the trash update, we've been rolling that out, we've had additional inspectors on, a few bumps in the road here and there, but the bags have sold out in a few locations already, so we're stocking them up with more bags. People have been in the inside town hall of the DPW building buying them and I haven't received a lot of, you know, upset people calling our office yet, so so far so good. We're just getting council updated and other than that, it's because with the holiday week, it wasn't too much going on, so.
I would like to see who takes the time for five or 10 minutes over the regular commute in June because that hasn't been the experience of most of the people I've talked to. It's, it's highly disruptive and, you know, it's, it's, it's something that we're dealing with as best we can, but I think that's affected a lot more than some other communities, but it is what it is, I guess, right now. And in terms of, and I thank you for bringing up the two-week update, I know Woodward and Curran did it in the center project and it is important, it's great that it's on a blog, it's important that we try to get it out to the businesses to make sure that they're aware and they could adjust their staffing as needed and such. And we know since school is out now, the day work is, is begun and, and I'm sure DPW Director, it just seems to be an awful lot going on in our town and we're grateful, we're thankful, but it's, it's frustrating at times, right? And, and we know we want to and I know DPW Director has been doing a great job in trying to make sure that all the work done on Revere Street is done, you know, as close as we can to the beginning of school because it's, you know, it seems like once July 4th comes, okay, the summer's almost over, let's get ready for the fall, which is so sad, but anyway. Council Placot.
Thank you, Council President. Is that the TIPS project that's going on on Revere Street or is it National Grid?
Well, we have four projects going on right now. We've got our water main project, we've got drainage work going on, National Grid and I think there's one other one going on as well.
It's National Grid Gas and.
Yeah.
National Grid.
Okay, so the TIPS hasn't started yet?
No, I'm sorry, this is all prep work, so we can start next spring, summer. The TIPS project has been put out to bid, we announced that at the last meeting, waiting to get the bids back in, but, so that's on track, but that won't start until next spring.
And the current work, it's going to continue on till, to next spring?
No, we're going to try to get most of this wrapped up by the end of fall, I think.
Yeah, the water, the infrastructure work will be done by.
So the Revere Street we're talking about more is between McGee's Corner and Dunkin' Donuts, I say Crest Ave. That's the, the infrastructure work that we're doing to prepare ourselves for the Tip Project.
Yeah, they still send them up through the Highlands.
Oh, no.
I'm sure they're slow.
Vice President Joe.
Thank you, Council President. And just, I want to go back to the town manager report of last meeting, so I just hope that I've given a little bit of leeway here because I wasn't at the last meeting, but there was a presentation regarding Airbnb and transient lodging and I just want to be sure before the committee meets that, that the request of the council is to come to you and the town attorney with sort of like a policy statement, a position statement, a statement of values, what we're kind of looking for out of this so that then the regulation can be written. Is that, is that a?
I think, I mean, we got a little bit of guidance at that meeting where basically we wanted enforcement and we wanted to, you know, clean up the bylaw that we have and just the minor tweaks here and there, so that's what we're doing now.
Okay.
But yes, any sort of additional guidance you can give us out of that would be great.
Great, okay, because we are going to meet, it was referred to committee, but we just want to make sure that, you know, we're all pulling in the same direction here to figure this out.
Loud and clear came that we want enforcement and we corral all the illegal ones and things like that, so.
Okay, cool.
Council Ayello.
Just a follow-up on Revere Street. So the question is, we've got multiple parties that are causing the diversion of traffic up into the Highlands. Do we know the schedule for all parties when this is going to end? I know you know the stuff you control, but what's the, their experience is they don't care who's doing the work, when it's closed, it's disruptive, but do you have any sense of?
Sure, so the work on the leg of Revere Street between Crest Ave and the town line, which is, which is forcing that detour, is National Grid Gas and it's, and it's United Civil, which is the electric, you know, the electric company contractor. United Civil has removed all the underground, the direct buried cable at this point. What they're working on is the restoration phase, their restoration phase. So they're, right now, they're, they're removing and resetting all the curbing, they'll be laying all new sidewalk and they're working in conjunction with National Grid, simultaneously rather, so that National Grid can get their gas main done. Because part of United Civil's job responsibilities is to reclaim that road and to do final paving before the winter. So that's why there's so much going on in that leg right now, they're working together. Cardillo is our contractor on the, on the water portion of the project.[1768.61] We're trying to get Crest Ave to McGee's Corner wrapped up prior to school. What I will say that we don't truly have a, have a, we know it's gonna be very disruptive. We stopped the night work, but we still have drainage work on Crest Avenue. If that happens during the day, then we're gonna have to figure out that, that detour. Probably gonna have to stop work elsewhere. I don't know what that means to, to, to scheduling, um, but the drainage work is, is a, is a curve, there's, there's no way to keep a lane of traffic open. The drainage is right in the center of that roadway, and it's a narrow roadway to begin with on Crest Avenue. So that has to be done, we have to figure out that. And then, you know, that, that's the timeline. So everybody's looking to be out of there so that the TIP project can come through in the spring of two thousand and four.
So, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but is the, for the, the sort of simple answer of how long is this going on for people up in the Highlands who, uh, you know, I talk to, is it likely by the end of November that every, all the parties, um, that are causing the, the detours that have to happen will be done with their work? Is that a rough sense?
Yeah, so that, 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 the, what they're striving for is to have Revere Street completed by Thanksgiving timeframe.
Okay, all right. That's, that's helpful to know, okay.
Now, then you start a, a TIP project in spring.
Yeah, then you got the next phase, yeah.
So we gotta figure out, you know, that, that detour, but, you know, if they start in McGee's Corner, it, you know, and work their way towards, uh, Crest Ave, we'll manage it a bit.
I'll, I'll defer to Barbara for a second.
Just before you go back, do we have a, um, any say in where they start the project?
Um, no, not, uh, I mean, we can certainly make recommendations, um, but, you know, it's a state-run project, at that point, we, we're handing it all to the state.
Okay. But in terms of like schools and stuff like that, I'm sure they would try to do the best they can to listen to us.
What we, what we put in the, what is in there is that they have to manage traffic and they can't have full closures, so they gotta keep a lane of traffic moving, you know, during their work.
Okay, um, okay. And before I go back to Consul Flaca, Consul DeMarco hasn't spoken yet.
Yeah, no, I, I was just gonna say, I, I wanted to, uh, thank the Winthrop Police Department. Um, I live on Revere Street, like right between Dunkin' Donuts and the town line. Um, they have not, as I've seen, towed anybody. Um, they'll ring your doorbell and say, hey, can you just move your car a few houses down? And they, uh, they've really been terrific, so, um, just wanted to give them a shout-out, that's all.
Consul Flaca.
Uh, thank you. Can we have any kind of report on this work in advance, like we did for the CBC?
We are doing that. You're talking right now, the work that's going on? It is. Every Thursday, uh, Woodward and Curran, who's our construction administrator for the, for the water work, is giving updates, uh, to the town manager's office. United Civil, uh, was also tasked on doing the same. They were doing it all last year. I'm assuming, Tony, that that's still happening from United Civil as well.
Can we put that, you know?
It goes out weekly in my town manager newsletter and whatnot, but, and we have it up on the website. I believe it's up on the website, I'll double-check that, but...
Really?
Yeah. It goes out weekly, and I know, cause Larissa's getting it and putting it in the town manager board every week.
Okay.
Yeah, already two weeks it comes out.
Yeah, I would say that it's not terribly disruptive. I mean, having the detour up through the Highlands is annoying, but, you know, aside from that, um, it's been running pretty smoothly.
It's disruptive, I mean, let's call it what it is. It's disruptive.
Well, I mean, you got the summer tunnel and what?
It's more disruptive because of the fact that we have two exits, you know, one in and one out, and that makes it more disruptive, but, um, um, Consul Ayala.
So a couple of quick things. One, I, I just wanna make sure that the fellow councils know what I know, which is, uh, uh, thank you for the repaving of Pleasant Street, um, was really...
Yeah, that was a key effort, I remember.
A tribute to you trying to figure out how to get more money out of Mass Highway Department, so, uh, good for you.
Now we have the contacts, yeah.
And there was a great diversion plan and stuff, but that was...
Yeah, kudos to Steve and his team, they put that together, Harvey and got that done.
The outcome, that was really terrific. Uh, as well as the curve in both directions, I know Consul Holland has written, uh, to you, uh, on Pleasant Street, uh, those signs are really terrific and you can, you can see the difference. And then, on the ferry, um, again, uh, it's great that you got sort of additional parking delineated for people. It has been heavy ridership, which is great. Um, yeah, I, I was there today, there's still some kind of...
Jet ski.
Uh, jet ski on a trailer parked inside, which should be the passenger waiting period.
Hopefully, I thought this week, but I thought this week next week.
Yeah, uh, but it's important, I think, to get the Haber master to understand.
No, I talked to Jeff over at, uh, OneBlower, and we're gonna, he, he's gonna check at the MBTA and see if they wanna use that space and open it up and maybe even sell tickets there, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, cause inclement weather's gonna come, uh, you know, it's been inclement weather all winter, summer from my perspective, but, um, you know, I, I think we wanna make sure people are, uh, doing that, and I'll tell you, um, you know, for those people who sort of are always wondering whether or not a ferry can be successful in this time, it, it really is remarkable what's been happening, so, uh, good to see.
And good news on that front too, of, you know, we had one thing over, one of the weekends, we ran with a boat, went in a little bit of mud, but one of the benefits that came out of that was, um, the MBTA realized and we realized too, that the, uh, they had undersized props on the, uh, for the new engines. They put them on, cause the other engines were dragging a little, you know, for, it made sense, but now with the new props, I told them they're actually less drag on the engines and they're running even faster than before.
No kidding?
With the proper sized props, so yeah, so that actually worked out, and the MBTA was happy about that.
Anyway, just more kudos to you, I just wanted to make sure. All right, great, thank you.
It's amazing when you're in the ferry business how successful you can be when, instead of being a municipality, doesn't need a ferry business. Consul Belcher.
Thank you. Um, just a question, I had a constituent reach out to me about raking on the beach, and this is kind of for Director Cal as well. It seems that the raking is stopped sooner than it did before on Otis, and the resident wasn't sure if the protected area for the plovers had moved or if there was some change down there, and if that was the case, if when that happens in the future, if a butters can be alerted, because I guess the number of bugs and stuff at their house has increased incredibly since the raking stopped down there.
So, yeah, there, there was, uh, there has been some changes down there. There are very strict guidelines and mandates around the pipe implover, which is a protected bird. Uh, the enclosures did expand because the, the pipe implovers had their hatch, you know, had their chicks, and their roaming area and their nesting area grew. So we're, we're required to enlarge our enclosures to accommodate their movement of habitat. And where the enclosures are, we're further required to stay two hundred, two hundred yards, not two hundred feet, two hundred yards away from all enclosures with heavy equipment. So as the enclosures grow, the amount of raking gets smaller. But we're hoping that they're, you know, that they move along off the beach, you know, the next several weeks, and then we can go back to what the old routine, can remove the enclosures and run, uh...
Thank you.
Uh, I'll just ask one question. I know on Revere Street, which we've kind of beaten to death here, but on Revere Street, on Bayou, right, private way, and there's vehicles being left there, National Grid and such, which I guess they need a place to park their vehicles, right? But it is a private way. Is that street going to be redone after the...
It is, it is. National Grid has an easement on Bayou. It is a private way, but they do have cables to go down, um, Bayou, so which gives them a utility easement. They will be reclaiming that road as part of the, you know, asphalt work. They won't be adding sidewalks or anything like that, they'll just be restoring it to put to the end of the asphalt.
Like a mill and overlay?
No, no, no.
I've been parking them.
All right. Uh, thank you to the town manager, CDICI.
Yeah, we had a great meeting last week, uh, talked about upcoming, uh, events that the committee wants to get into, uh, talked about some of the progress we made and looking forward to getting some new members. Uh, as you know, a couple of members are off now, um, so I think there's maybe one on site, you know, anticipating a couple more that might be applying, so they've been out recruiting and trying to get some more memberships, so, um, excited about the upcoming year, had some good conversations about some, you know, public forums and trying to get some speakers into town and things like that, um, to talk about, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion and things like that, so, um, a lot of good ideas around the committee, so I think, um, they have a task with trying to, whether it's at the school or whatnot, get a couple of speakers this year, and they're also, I think, gonna, um, take the lead next June twenty-six with the, um, you know, Dave Green and Mona Cooper Memorial, they, um, they wanna, you know, take the lead on that next year and go with something, so, um, excited it's gonna be a, a good year for that group.
All right, thank you. Old business, town council appropriated from the Water Sauer Capital Stabilization Fund, the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand sixty-two dollars. This did come out of committee, we're going to hold off on voting on this until our next meeting, is my understanding. Um, discussion, TSAC Locust Street, that is still in committee. Winter Beach access points, we hope to have, um, some good news to share at our next council meeting, so please listen for that. Uh, we did do the change on the bus stop from Walden, from Herman Street to Walden Street. The only comments I've received have been positive, I'm not saying there isn't any negative comments out there, but it seems to have been a pretty smooth transition. The MBTA has put signage up, there's still some signs that have to come down, I, I believe, but, um, and one more sign that has to go up on Walden Street. But the comments I've heard, and I do live in the area, so I could see the buses going, coming and going, it seems to be, uh, good for traffic, it seems to be, and again, it will be a bigger test as school opens in September and, and the pattern switch, but it seems to be a relatively smooth transition. I did notice over the weekend, uh, a bus coming down Herman, and I think some of that is just, you know, you might have some weekend drivers on that unfamiliar or didn't read the memo or whatever, but, um, you know, ninety-eight percent of the times, the buses I've seen have been going down the right route, and it's been working out pretty well. Yes, Consul Ayala.
Just a question on a follow-up, and I think, uh, we had asked, uh, the town manager, I've talked to T about it, I don't know if you had a chance, on the inbound, um, side of the route, we've talked about the possibility of trying to get the T to provide a couple of bus shelters, recognizing people are gonna be farther from the homes in inclement weather, rain, snow, et cetera, be a good place for them to go. Did you have a chance to?
When we looked at, oh, well, I will say before, when we looked at the, the sites for the stocks, we specifically looked at areas that can handle an enclosure. And inbound, just for people, again, it's, it's kind of opposite, so the inbound is going into East Boston, and the outbound is actually coming in the winter, official MBTA terms, but, um, town manager, if you have more to add to that?
Uh, yeah, like a lot of things, uh, it's going to committee of the MBTA, they've got a committee that's looking at enclosures throughout the whole network, uh, they're getting back what our request is in, uh, that I got the, you know, we have to look at this globally and we're deciding where they all go. You know, we've got them all in storage, cause I decided to tell them that, said they had a whole bunch of them sitting off to the side, could we grab a couple, but they're trying to locate them around, so, uh, they haven't got a, a final answer yet, but I've asked twice now.
Yep, never hurts to have members of the legislature calling.
Yeah, there you go. You got it.
Or former members of the T.
Yeah.
Our former members of the T, but only PS.
Yeah, yep.
Consul Montz, uh, can you clarify where we're at with the Locust Street? You said it was still in committee, but...
My understanding was, did we not send that to committee when it came back from TSAC?
I think it went to committee a lot.
Yes, and I, and I think, you know, Vice President was not here at that meeting.
I need to recuse myself from the matter, so if we're gonna discuss it, I need to step out of the room.
Well, we're not going to discuss it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so, um...
Watched the last meeting, I believe it was sent to a joint subcommittee.
It was, it's sent to a joint subcommittee.
I just don't think it's...
So, and I don't, and I don't believe the subcommittees have met yet.
I just don't want it to get caught in this...
Nope, neither do we.
Just want it done.
Anything else on that? Um, public walkways, Herman Street, Short Street, we're still looking into, um, getting that done, correct, or getting bids?
Yeah, we're getting bids, was Director Cal and I spoke about that earlier this week. Um, we're looking at, um, you know, whether we replace the granite or if we look at maybe some pre-cash concrete, that'd be easier to put handrails in and stuff like that, so we'll get a couple of different pricing options on that.
Okay, thank you on that.
Is there a light up there at the top of the stairs?
No.
Nothing more than a, a, a street light that would be in that proximity, there's no special light on that.
May wanna look at how difficult or easy it might be to, to put some kind of lighting in there for, especially when it gets darker and early.
Well, in the morning, yeah, early morning hours, yeah.
All right, new business.
Uh, Council President, at the beginning, you kinda skipped over the water rate presentation, did you want me to do that, or?
See, I don't even have it on my, uh, on my... Don't have it on my agenda items.
It was number five.
Me neither.
Yeah, it was number five.
That's not on my, huh? So we will go back, I see I get the old agendas, I don't even get the new agendas. And I'm sure everybody is, motion to suspend the rules to go back out of order to go to agenda item number five. Motion by Consul Belcher, second by Consul Flaca, others in favor say aye. I always know the ayes have it, we will go back, and I'm sure we are anxiously, everyone is anxiously awaiting this presentation by the town manager will put on his water commissioner hat.
Look at that.
Look at that, water.
That's right. All right, uh, this is, uh, similar to four nights of last year, uh, water re-presentation. So an FY twenty-three recap, uh, so we invoiced or billed out, um, eleven million dollars in water sewer usage charges, um, the last fiscal year. Uh, we saw a two-point-nine percent increase in usage last year, uh, with combined with our lean collection, accounted for a water sewer revenue surplus of ninety-four thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars. Uh, and of the money we billed out, we collected ninety-seven point two percent of the amount billed, and, uh, a little bit of drop-off from last year on that, uh, but we, you know, anticipate we'll, we'll collect the money and get it back this year, so, uh, as we do, you know, for the prior years. Uh, the FY twenty-four rate, uh, so as you can see, uh, with the budget increases, um, personnel, you know, I'll kind of go to the line in the end there, personnel was going up by nine cents, um, you know, if you do by, you know, rate increase, uh, health insurance is up seven cents, uh, purchase services and supplies up twenty-three, uh, we saw a slight drop in the MWR rate, DEP assessments down four cents, uh, debt on the principal and interest, uh, went down twelve cents. Capital projects, as you can see, is now in the bu, um, in the budget of two hundred twenty thousand, which is what we talked about doing last year, so that's the fifty-one cents, and then indirect cost dropped by thirty-one cents. So what that means to everybody is that the rate for this year will go up to, uh, up forty-three cents over what it was last year, uh, for the upcoming water rate. Um, there's the announcement, forty-three cents over FY twenty-three, so our new combined water sewer rate for FY twenty-four will be twenty-five twenty-seven. Uh, it's a one-point-seven percent increase over last year's rate. Uh, the FY twenty-three rate was twenty-four eighty-four, the blended rate. Uh, so now, how's it gonna impact the average rate payer? Um, so there's the, uh, annual usage, uh, what the bills would be at the old rate, what the bills are gonna be at the new rate, um, so you can see for a family of one, uh, based on the, you know, American Water Works, it's suggested average of ninety-four gallons per day, uh, to be an increase of nineteen dollars and seventy-two cents. average of 94 gallons per day, it'd be an increase of $19.72. For a family of two, 39.44. And then for a family of four, $78.88. So. Going to wait till the end or? Yes, no, can you ask first? Go ahead. Is that on a quartal, is that on a billing cycle, or is that on an annual basis? I think it's annual, annual usage is something like that. Okay, all right, thanks. First column. Yep, so it says. No, I'm just like, I was actually saying, I guess it's myself. Yeah, thank you. I just found it, thank you. So moving forward, you know, we use the water sewer, water sewer free cash to fund, or, you know, retain earnings, whatever, to fund the unanticipated capital projects in FY24, similar to what we did last year. If we exceed, you know, capital funds included in the FY24 budget of the 220. We're still working on, I haven't finalized yet, but we will get it all done this year, the free cash policy that we'll bring forward to the council to consider, you know, to use some of the free cash to fund some of the capital projects, the smaller emergency capital projects that come up, as we've seen, you know, throughout the year, and also, you know, use a percentage of that retained earnings, which the bonding agencies like to, you know, put right into the capital stabilization fund. So, you know, a set number out of the retained earnings will go in there every year. But we are, we're still working on that policy, I haven't finalized it yet. And that's it, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, but that is the water and energy.
Consul Ayala?
Tony, I know you have a study going on with respect to the, sort of, having a financial strategy for the long-term solve of the state of good repair deficit that we have.
Yeah.
And at least, sort of, my back of the envelope calculation, the 220,000 annual rate of investment is probably not sufficient, we're going to have to increase that. When are we going to have that analysis to suggest to us how we step it up and what that means?
We're still working on it, I anticipated it probably by the end of the summer sometime soon, but that was what we originally thought.
So September, October, we can have a discussion of that?
Yeah, I would think so. And then we can start doing this strategic plan and thinking about how much money we want to set aside, so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And then as far as some of the other numbers that, hold on a second here. Um, I have, maybe I open it. All right. So last year, you know, we ended the year with the water sewer retained earnings, I know I was asked this before. The balance as of 6/30/2023 was $179,495. We started the year with $1,009,851.70, but we had used monies throughout the year for projects, the 220 that we did not have in the budget last year for capital, $247,000 for the water main master plan that we just talked about, $143 for the PRV station project design and engineering, $500,000 transferred to water stabilization capital, water sewers capital stabilization fund, and the, 694,000 to fund the FY24 capital plan. So when you take that money out, the balance was the 179,495. And the balance as of 6/30 in the water sewer capital stabilization fund is $523,854, but we do have a pending motion that, you know, we'll hear in the future for 174,000 to come out of that. So if that motion passes, we'd have a balance in there of $349,792 in those funds.
And where are we on our ability to get loans from MWR on projects if we need it? Because we had been told before that we had used our allotment up until 2027 and whatever.
2028, if we move our water main, if water main.
Allowance.
Funding program.
Yeah.
We can still, obviously, we can use it, we can still go after the lead line replacement money.
Mm-hmm.
And that should get us through at least the rest of this phase, and if the council chooses, or the town manager chooses, to go after Phase Two, which is the partial lead services, there is money there, and I would certainly recommend, recommend you do.
I was surprised to see, you know, the debt and interest payments go down, which now, you know, I know we've been funding more projects and.
Yeah, it's, it's when they hit. So they'll, they didn't hit this year, they'll hit next year, and then the ones we had dropped off, so, yeah.
And have we noticed a change in if we're going for any funding and interest rates that have affected us at this level?
That's a bad question for Robbie.
Okay, I'll ask Robbie then.
Yeah.
All right. Consul Monson?
In this water discussion, I didn't see any accommodation for water loss or for any, does that, has that been, I know that conversation was started last year, but does that affect the tax rate, the water rate, and has there been any remediation on some of the water loss areas?
I rather kind of thought water has dropped significantly.
I'd say, yeah, it's gone right now.
With all of our, you know, aggressive projects that we've been doing, 16 years that I've been here, we've had a major project going, major water main project going every year. We've stayed committed to the lead line replacement project, which we lose a lot of water through leaking lead, you know, lead lines. But we're down to 16%, which is what we calculated last year, which we reported to DEP for our account as well, so.
So.
That's significant, that's down nine percent.
That was up as high, yeah, that was up as high as 24, 25%. And if you look at the NWA assessment in that presentation, you could notice that reflection there, too. And they don't assess just on one year, they, they go back three or five years, three years, and they do an average assessment. So it takes some time to see that, you know, savings, but I think the fact that, you know, we, we have, and the director, I don't know if it's 45 miles of infrastructure under the town, and we've done a lot of work in the last 10, 12, 15 years, and we've still only hit like seven miles, eight, what is it, eight?
Yeah, we're, we're getting close to, just over 10 now with this, with this project.
So it's, you know, that's still less than 25% of the total infrastructure in the town, but I think the projects that we've done and, and the way we've done them is definitely, that's, that's a lot of money when you're talking about going from 24% to 16%.
One more thing before, since we're on the topic of water, can you give us a status update on the meters and the, the replacements and the upgrades and where we're at? I know, think there was something like 400 or so was a good number left that, and you're kind of like still progressing.
Are you confusing the meters with the lead lines?
No, the meter replacements were part of the audit, and that was part of the water loss.
Right, we had, at that time, we had just under 1,200 remaining, went down to just under 800 remaining for our budget.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Consul Ayala?
One more question. I know we benefited over the last couple of years from some of the upper money, which was sort of the emergency money because of the pandemic. Is there any, are there any other sort of new federal sources that could come in and help us?
There's other infrastructure money out there that we're talking, we're looking into, there's, they haven't opened up yet, but there's other grants, we get updates every day from, you know, Senator Markey's office and, you know, all that, so we're getting, we're, we're in the process of, Steve and I talking about it, but yes, there's more federal money coming out, I guarantee we're going to get it, but we're going to be in the, and then we're going to put it, make sure we put our application.
Yeah, no, no, let's chase that money.
Absolutely.
More Joe Biden signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Take whatever federal money we can get.
Thank you. So we revert back to the agenda, go to item number 13, new business, municipal town hall parking lot regulations. Now, this has come out of TSAC with a recommendation and, let's see if we revert the thing or if we'll just, so basically, what they're coming out of recommendations for, there are four spots right in front of the hobby room here, right adjacent to Herman Street, and there is currently a handicap spot, two 30-minute spots, and then a veteran spot. What the recommendation has come out of, we've, we've had a lot of complaints from citizens that choose to come up to town hall to pay their bills, and there's never a place to park. So we had sent this to TSAC, and what we have, what we are, what they're coming back, what their recommendation is going to be is to have four spots. The four spots that are out there will be 30-minute spots for town hall business only during the hours of town hall. What else will come out of that is there will be an additional handicap spot put in the back lot, which is better, closer to the library as well as town hall, so there will be two handicap spots there. And, and I could be wrong in this, but by also, they're suggesting a handicap spot on Herman Street. So this will be sent to Rules and Ordinance, Cons, Vice President?
Just one other, I think, keynote from there, if not, yeah, but I, I think the recommendation was also to move the veteran spot closure to the new veteran service.
Well, yes, the veteran service office has changed out of town hall, and it's over the EB Newton, so the idea was to put the veteran spot there. Yes, we are not forgetting the veterans in any way, shape, or form, no. So we are going to refer that to Rules and Ordinance, come back for a recommendation. Three things. Thank you. Committee appointments, reappointments. Town Council firms, the appointments made by Town Council President of the following for their terms to expire June 30th, 2026. We have Finance Commission Karen Chavez, Joseph Hanlon, Shannon Pulhos. Council on Aging Alice Haskell, Linda Cronin. Board of Appeals Mark Chapdellane. Planning Board Jason Palutro. Commission CDICR Rachel Alibisso. PAX Committee Patricia Singarella, John Dowd. And Council on Aging, we did. See a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Consul Demakos, second by Consul Facillo. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'd like to take a council's privilege, then push this off by a meeting, and also request that it is preceded by an executive session.
I don't think it qualifies for an executive session, you have more, that you absolutely have a privilege to put it off a meeting, but it does not have.
It does qualify for executive session, we checked that the town attorney room is discussing personnel matters, that is a state law.
I don't know if this is a personnel matter. These are appointments made by Town Council.
Yeah, I don't know volunteer boards or, you know, appointments to boards, falls under, that personnel, I'll, I'll ask the town council, but there is one for personnel, non-union personnel, but I'm not sure that this, this qualifies, a board member qualifies.
We'll be more than happy to put it off, it'll be on the agenda for next meeting.
Thank you.
Let's see, public comment, number two. Yes, Mr. Dowd?
I checked out precinct one. First of all, I pulled up on Revere Street, I pressed, coming into Winter, and there were a couple workers sitting on the back of the truck, and I asked them when they're going to wrap it up, and he said, not anytime soon. So it was rather amusing, but if there could be a date that they could give you, possibly hold it to it, it's a bumpy ride coming into town. Plus the traffic going through the aisles, so if they can give you a date, maybe hold their feet to the fire there, don't kill the job, that's what the workers said. The other thing is, I'm coming from the center, from Pauline Street going down Walden Street, so I see the new T signs up, so I, I didn't get to the curb, I pulled over, and I tried to read the bottom line, which is a couple of telephone numbers, I couldn't, I couldn't really kind of see. And on my left, a person in a Tesla pulls up beside me, now he's straddling the, the yellow lines, and so he said, what's going on, or something like that, and he said, he said, do you realize how fast you were going? And I said, I don't think I was going very fast at all. And so now he caught his head a little bit, he said, well, and he turned the screen, and the Tesla to him, he said, well, you were going 18 miles an hour, and I said, so is there something wrong with that? And so he said something else, and I, and I told him to go and figure out something else to do with his time, very politely. But I noticed, coming from Main Street to the center, there's a sign that says, School Zone, 20 miles per hour. So I'm wondering why, now, if he had seen the sign coming from Pauline Street on Walden Street, he would have seen the sign that says, School Zone, 20 miles an hour, because people still go fast on that street, I've witnessed it, and the buses go fast on that street, I've been there, I've monitored them, and people see an open space, and they want, it's like Shirley Street going down to the point, they see an open span, and they want to go fifty, so I'm going to get another sign saying, School Zone, 20 miles an hour, at the beginning of Walden Street from the center area. Thank you.
Thank you, we will look into that. Yes, sir.
Jim Corcoran, precinct one. Forty years ago, I was a parking clerk, and we wrote a bylaw on all of the parking violations. And a big problem was Woodside Avenue, it's still a problem. And there's a memorial post for a veteran across from Rogers Cafe on a sidewalk of Rose was the veteran's agent last year, and she said, next to that memorial, we're going to put a parking space for a disabled pet, and his name was Bob Oliver. Now, you guys, on Memorial Day, gave Bob Oliver Man of the Year, but you didn't, never gave him a parking spot on Woodside.
Thank you, sir, I'll look into it.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Mrs. Anne Swob, precinct four. I had the opportunity to go into the NFA on the new subway line. I must say, I convinced my daughter never to drive again into the Boston, it was delightful. And I don't know if we, what we can do, if anything, to keep the additional schedule on the MBTA, but it works well. I'm not sure that we have enough parking at Orem Heights again to, to make sure that we have, that we can get there, but if the, if the bus lines continue to operate in a very efficient way, this may be a way that we can actually get out of Winter in a timely way, so it would be a great way for me to make it.
And the ferry.
Anything on Zoom?
Karen Chavez.
Karen?
She's.
She's talking, but we don't hear her. Karen, are you muted?
Karen's iPad is talking, but she's not.
She's unmuted on my end.
Oh, they can hear her on Zoom.
They can hear her.
Everybody can hear her but us, is that what's going on?
So the audio in the room is probably off.
Um.
My cell phone on me, I call her.
We could do a workaround.
Just make sure you mute.
To go out and then come back in.
Yeah, but if he wants to, we can hear him.
That's what I'm saying, so the audio is not on here. She's still trying to.
Everybody's trying to reach her.
Does anyone have access to the Zoom call that just can be put on a speakerphone?
I think the vice president is trying to.
Try someone else and see if it's everybody, or just her.
We hear on Zoom, there's only one person, but the audio in here is not working.
Steven. That's like Kurt Mulatto weighing or something, because he was on.
Yeah, I saw Kurt say something.
Let's see if we can.
He's muted. Now Wendy's talking.
Wendy's. We can't hear her either. That's Frankie, I feel like we're listening to Pink Floyd.
Pink Floyd.
I'll get a.
Yeah, it's picking up these microphones, and it's coming through.
Yeah, but if you mute your phone, won't it stop that?
No, because it's still, they can hear us, so that it's going back, yeah.
Should we just follow up with Karen?
On a fan?
Maybe just a couple of words from her, typed?
Yeah.
No, why don't we just call her on the phone?
I don't know if that's appropriate to do.
Maybe.
Wendy is muted.
Yeah, we can't hear Wendy, we can't hear Wendy either.
I.
Want to ever call them by phone?
I think we're quiet. I don't know, then we could be potentially calling, I mean, I'd be more than happy to call her, but then you, you have to have that same luxury for everyone, and I don't know if I have everybody's number that might want to speak.
Was anybody?
No, there wasn't.
No. So, we'll get to the bottom of it.
Town manager with a phone call, work appropriately.
Like you said, we, I mean.
No, I know.
We wouldn't have any other residents' phone number, right?
Right.
But she's the only.
Yes, Karen can type her message.
No, no, I get it, it's just, yeah, I mean, if we have somebody in the future that we can't hear, like, we just wouldn't be able to get in touch with them.
Just helping ourselves out.
Technical glitches, they happen.
Right.
Yeah, happens.
I have Karen and Wendy's number, I can reach out to both of them.
We're going to go to public relations, and then if we could fix it, or if Karen could come in, we will go back to, we don't want to not give somebody the opportunity to talk if they can, if we can get it cleared up. Public Relations nomination papers for the November 7th, 2023 election are now available, still available at Town Clerk's office, deadline to return, certified signatures would be September 19th, 2023. Consul Honan, any public relations?
Yes, next Wednesday, July 26th, it's movie night on the beach. It's on Shore Drive, on the, Winter Beach, on Shore Drive, at Cutler Street, and they're going to show Luca, I think it's a Disney Pixar movie. It's on Shore Drive, on the Winter Beach, on Shore Drive at Cutler Street, and they're going to show Luca. I think it's a Disney Pixar movie. Movie night on the beach, July twenty-sixth, Wednesday night. Don't miss it. Should be fun.
Counsel Ficillo.
Nothing there.
Yes, I have a, a blood drive from the Odd Fellows that I'd like to report on next, Saturday, the twenty-ninth of July, from ten to two. So if you can, you should. You do save lives when every, every time you donate.
Counsel Belcher.
No, thank you.
Counsel DeMarco.
No, other than welcoming back Vice President Corleone, I got nothing.
Counsel Ayala.
Nothing from me.
Counsel Flacott.
Nothing.
Vice President Rujero.
Nothing.
And I will also bring up something. We have the possibility of having a, well, we're going, I'm going to ask for a, to suspend council rules to have a special council meeting next Tuesday evening, July twenty-fifth, at, time doesn't matter, six P M. It will be a, a special meeting, and it will be for the purpose, the main purpose, we will try to get this water motion passed. But other than that, the main purpose of the meeting will be to discuss a new fire station plan. And at that meeting, we will discuss the plan. We'll talk a little bit about it. And I will initiate a process for a fire building, a fire station building committee, and we will talk about the, the committee and the size of the committee and the scope of the committee. But it is, it will be timely. We hope to have this meeting for, again, July twenty-fifth at six P M, if that works, at the Harvey Hearing Room. It will be obviously a public meeting. And so there's a motion to suspend council rules. Is there a motion to suspend council rules? Was cut, motion by Counsel Ayala, second by Counsel Flacott. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, you, you were clear that it was a public meeting. It's not executive session.
It is a regular, it, it is not a regular agenda meeting. It is a special meeting of the town council that will have a limited agenda.
Okay.
Counsel, so there is a motion. There's a second. It's on the floor for discussion. Vice President Rujero.
Just the, the only two items on are the water and the fire.
I can't promise that there's two items, but there won't be a specific, there won't be two public comments. There might be one. There won't be a town manager's report. You know, it will be a, a thin down agenda.
Yeah, I just am not sure if we're going to have a rules and ordinance meeting before then. I have to check with schedules.
Right, and that's the other thing potentially that we could do if the, right.
I'm, I'm not sure.
So you just have, no, no, I'm saying, right.
Counsel President, you want to talk about potentially the August dates, or is that?
Um, well, if we, first, I want to pass this, because if we pass this, then we could talk about the August dates at the next meeting, if we want to. But first, I want to just try to do this. So there's a motion. There's a second to suspend council rules to have a special meeting next Tuesday night, July twenty-fifth, at six P M at the Harvey Hearing Room. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. Uh, we will also talk at that meeting about a, about meeting schedule in August. I know the town manager's going to be away the first week in August, and we might, it might be beneficial to adjust the, the meeting times. And we could talk, we will have that as an agenda item on the next, at the special meeting, just to see if there's any further, you know, gives us a better idea. Gives us another week to see what we would need to make sure we get done. If there's any timely managers, I know this water thing has to be voted on. And not only does that have to be voted on, the minutes have to be approved at a subsequent meeting, and there's a time date on that. So we will have August meeting schedules and any potential changes on the agenda for that special meeting on the twenty-fifth. Is Karen available?
Karen, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you.
Hey, you. So I'm, we're sorry for the difficulties, Karen.
No, no, no. It's not your fault. I probably screwed up something in this place. Anyways, the first thing I want to say is I want to thank the town manager, because I thought I missed that whole watering thing. And somehow I guess I didn't.
It was me.
Anyhow, I am not being critical of P P W, and please, Steve Keller, don't think that I am. I thought when all those planters were put in, in the center, that there was some sort of agreement or money thing, that all those things were going to be taken care of, you know, to clean up the planters, to water the planters. Am I wrong? Did I, did I not hear this right? Mr. Lucerto certainly has some good points as far as Counsel Honan being down there.
No, I think, I, I, I think the comments made here in the earlier session and your comments, Karen, I, I do believe, I, I don't, I know we discussed many times making sure that we did our due diligence in maintaining these new structures we're creating and the, and the sea, the streetscape that we created. I do believe there were watering stations put in at these stations. I don't know if there is a, I know we looked into, you know, that we discussed before at many council meetings about creating a P O X department to take some of the work away from the D P W. And this, in this response to have a set crew that would take care and maintain P O X. I will ask Steve if he has a second to, if he has anything to add to this in, in terms of maintaining the.
Thank you. We've talked about a maintenance plan for the C V D since the beginning of the project. I've talked about it every, every year, every phase of the project, every step of the way, we talked about it. It was always a a sum, a budgetary thing, and it was, it was always for an outside landscaper to come in or something to that effect. I need to remind everybody, because I don't know that everybody in this room really grasps how down we are in manpower and how many things continue to keep coming. The D P W is going to pick it up, and D P W is going to pick it up. We're down eleven positions right now. I just got another resignation today. So right now, you have approximately thirteen people, thirteen people taking care of your buildings, your cemeteries, your fifty-two acres of grass, your water, your store. So I'm not trying to sit here and make excuses. It's the last thing that I want to do. Sixteen years, I've worked hard to keep the town, the community looking good. But we are truly, truly down to bare minimum. We cannot build plow routes going into this winter. I tell you that right now, if I don't start retaining some, some personnel. So that's where we are. We did send somebody down to do some weeding. I can just get through the long term right now. Doing weeding in, in, in flower beds, it's, it's not an everyday thing that I can commit to. We certainly are stretching and trying to prioritize things, trying to keep the beach maintained, trying to, you know, everything that you, you look around, it's, it's everything. It's the trees. It's, it's all those responsibilities. I don't know if everybody really understands the scope of what D P W is tasked with. So. But that is certainly money well spent if you can get a, you know, a landscaping company to come in and, 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 you're right, it's a thirteen million dollar project.
No, it's a thirteen million dollar project, and I know, Steve, we did ask this question a hundred times throughout the project, and you were right up front saying that this is probably a forty to fifty thousand dollar job in terms of maintaining it, and we should have that money put aside. And I know I spoke with the town manager maybe a month back about looking in the possibility of subcontracting out some of this work, and not just the center, but some other areas of town that need the attention that haven't been able to get it because of the manpower, including down the point and up at the Highlands at the P O X. And, and I know the town manager is in the process, or has been in the process.
Steve and I are talking to some people, and we're in the process of kicking it off. It'll relieve some of it, but, you know, we may need to use this person even, maybe to even do some of the weeding and stuff. So we might have to expand it a little bit.
Karen, did you have something else? Is she still there?
Are you finished?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have, I have, I have an echo on the, on the.
Yeah, we hear the answers.
There you go.
Is it okay now?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe let's shut off the echo. Yeah. Maybe lower your volume.
What's it now?
Down.
That's five times.
Right.
Yes.
She had it on laptop just.
Do you have it on your laptop, the M C A T?
Five times.
What's that? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Much better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yep.
I don't know what I, I, I've really messed up tonight, I guess.
No, don't worry about it. I'm right with you.
I, I don't know if the town manager heard what I said, but, you know, I appreciate you going down to the waterings. And as far as the planters in the center, I thought there was some sort of an agreement or some money that was allocated to take care of those planters as far as cleaning them up and watering them. I, I'm not being grateful towards D P W, because I know they have a thousand other things to do. But did we, no, might have some sort of agreement with that? I'm not sure.
Yep, Karen, we did.
Mr. Lucerto, I'm sure you appreciated Counsel Honan being there. But I don't know why Counsel Honan has to be down there if there's another need to cleaning up those planters. The other thing is, as far as that public walkway is concerned, from here to Shore to Walden, I've had a couple of phone calls on that, because people who bring up on a romantic street, expected street, going down to get the bus, have found those stairs thought to be the safest in the world. I heard what the town manager said, and he and Mr. Keller are trying to get that done. And I think that should be done A S A P, because all of a sudden, it's going to be September, and people are going to be really having a problem getting down to use the buses on Walden Street. I guess that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Karen, can you hear us at all?
Just Denise. Just Denise.
So we did address most of Karen's concerns, and I'm sure Karen, knowing Karen, she'll be watching this M C A T tomorrow and getting the full scoop. But she does, as, as usual, bring up a lot of points that we have discussed, and, and we've been on top of the, the, the short street, the steps from, from Herman down since June, and we are working on that. So there is a, we, we've gone through public relations. Any other discussion?
Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
Just want to say, just want to say, the same problem exists going from the Highlands down to Revere Street on that walkway. You know, I don't know if there's much we can do about the stairs, but we can definitely put new railings in.
No, we, and that's one of the things we've, we've had on the agenda to look at walkways. I just thought that this one where we changed the bus route was one, it was an obvious one to start at, and we have to get it done. But there are fifty-three other, or whatever the number is, walkways that have to be addressed, and they have to be prioritized, and especially getting to public transportation would put them higher on the list. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Munson, second by Counsel Belcher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.